Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of January 2nd, 2018. First item is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to my United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to add Deputy Code Enforcement Officer under New Business Letter B. After that, I'd like an approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we move to approve the agenda.
Okay, all in favor? And a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th?
Nineteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 19th.
All in favor? Department Head Committee Chair Updates Forest Conservation.
Good evening, folks. My name is Tom Cashin. I'm representing the Acton Conservation and Forestry Committee tonight. We wanted to share with you the current status of our work on the Hebohebo Road. And currently, we have a draft letter that is addressed to property owners that abut the Hebohebo Road. And if you don't mind, I'll just read three or four sentences here that comprise the letter. I think you have copies in your packet already, right?
Yes.
It's dated December 18th, 2017.
It's dated the 29th because you asked me to take a word out.
Fine. Dear recipient's name. The Town Conservation and Forestry Committees of Acton and Lebanon, Maine are currently discussing a proposal for a recreational trail on the Hebohebo Road. Both towns have determined, on the advice of their respective land use lawyers, that a public easement still exists permitting public access along the road. In consideration of your ownership of abutting property to the Hebohebo Road, we are hoping that you will respond and share your concerns with the committees involved. Our primary goal is to foster a sense of respect for the road as a recreational resource and to curtail further abuse. It is hoped that as more people enjoy the existing trail, a greater sense of its value will emerge. If you'd like to be informed of upcoming meetings, please fill out the bottom portion of this letter and return it to us via an envelope enclosed. If you have any questions, please contact the committee at -- we're putting in some contact information for Carl Davis there. Thank you for your interest. We hope to hear from you soon. Sincerely, Acton Conservation and Forestry Committee. If you folks could help the Conservation Committee soon with maybe a vote in support of proceeding with this, that would give us some guidance. And consider also the fact that we need -- one question when we went to Joel Lenkowski pertaining to the status of the road in terms of its easement still being viable. We did not ask him for a legal inquiry into determining the width of the public easement. He did verify that the -- from his research, that the public easement is still viable, but we don't know the dimensions of it.
Okay.
And that would also be helpful. If you could convey your thoughts on those things to Jen, and she can get back to the committee soon.
Check with Joe on the size of the easement on the roads.
Okay.
And then I need just a thumbs up in terms of proceeding with mailing this out.
I think the letter looks great.
Yeah, it does look good.
Thank you, folks.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to Old Business. We have the 2018-19 deadlines.
So at the last meeting, discussion with the Warrant and Finance and amongst yourselves, you were going to put some thought into what you wanted the memo to say to the department heads and to the social services so that we could get this memo out tomorrow. Remember, the initial request deadline is February 2nd, so looking for guidance as far as what you want that to say.
As far as the department heads, I'm looking at hopefully level funding and not to exceed a 1.5% increase for the departments. And that was that -- that's for that memo. And so as far as the 501(c)(3)'s, it's the same. I mean, if they can keep it level funded or no percent or 1.5% increase, however, is that where we're talking about with the warrant and finance?
Yeah, so can we go back to the department heads? So the memo to all the department heads and the committees are going to be that either flat line or the bottom line, not to increase 1.5%?
Yes.
Okay, so salaries and everything, flat 1.5, okay?
Yes.
That's clear, thank you. What about if they have a special warrant article? Because let's just say the same memo is going to go out to the roads. I mean, we're looking -- you want all departments the same, or do you want the operating budget? And do you -- will you entertain a special warrant article for a project or something that maybe a department or the forestry has going on, or maybe the road committee or a bridge that, you know, I don't know?
Yeah, we would entertain extra warrant articles outside of the regular business.
So 1.5% of the operating budget? And if they had anything, any special requests, put them separate and you'll look at them?
Separate.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then the 501(c), so the social services, we're asking them to level fund their requests last year? Or if they request an increase, it's not to exceed 1.5% of whatever they requested last year or whatever they were granted last year?
What they granted?
Yeah, what they granted.
What the town of Acton granted then?
Yes.
Okay. So same thing, level fund is that -- level fund or no more than a 1.5% increase of what was granted last year?
Yes.
And we're not vetting them. We're sending them a copy of the timeline and a memo?
Yes.
So we're vetting if we get a brand-new?
Brand-new only.
We're sending them the same application from last year?
As long as they have a 501(c)(3) status.
Okay. Okay, now I'm clear.
Thank you.
Personnel policy.
So we have two things here. I have an employee that asked to speak, and we have a follow-up from last week as well. We can start with the follow-up. I think I put first. So I sent an email after the meeting. So hello, the Board of Selectmen asked me to pose the following question to you. This went to Maine Municipal Legal, so it didn't cost any additional money. Please see the article below from our last annual town meeting. It was Article 24 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $868,740 for general government wages, operational expenses, employee benefits for the following departments. And a breakdown was on there. And then the recommendations were on there, so Roland Waterhouse made a motion to approve it. With that said, please also see our personnel policy adopted by the Board of Selectmen with a hyperlink to the policy. With the information you have in front of you, the question is this. Does the Board of Selectmen have the right to adopt a personnel policy that allows for bereavement days or snow days to be paid, assuming they do not go over the lines above? A resident believes the personnel policy is paying for such things may need to go before town meeting. Please advise in writing. So, dear Jennifer, I'm not aware of any legal requirement that paid bereavement leave or paid snow day be approved or adopted by town meeting. Since the Select Board adopted the personnel policy, the Board has the authority to enact these provisions without town meeting approval. As you also pointed out, so long as the voters have appropriated sufficient funds to pay the employees for these days, the Select Board may enact or amend the policy to grant employees paid bereavement and/or snow days. I hope this helps. Brianna Gurns, some legal services. And then the other one was?
Brenda.
Brenda wanted to speak to you. In a public meeting.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Brenda Charland. I work in your Land Use Department, and I wanted to speak with you. I know that you're working on the personnel policy. I'm sorry?
The microphone.
I think you just have to be closer to the microphone.
Oh, okay. Okay. Brenda Charland, I work in the Land Use Department, and I wanted to speak with the Board of Selectmen about the personnel policy that you're working on. And I wanted to bring a couple of points that I'm not sure that you're aware, that you understand, or perhaps you do. I don't know. I'm not a public speaker. Anyway, I appreciate that you have included paying snow days in the personnel policy. It makes a big difference. I'd like to point out that when you pay me for a day I don't work for whatever reason, that's money that's already allocated and it's funded to me for that day. So you're not paying someone else to replace me and incurring any kind of an expense that you wouldn't have had otherwise. So it doesn't affect the budget. And the example that I'd like to point out is I don't work Mondays. A lot of holidays fall on Mondays. I think out of a particular year, I looked at the last six years, I get paid three holidays a year on an average. That's not my problem. I understand that sometimes you win with the roll, you lose with the roll. I can understand that. But when you close the town hall, like this year, Christmas fell on a Monday. I knew I wouldn't be paid for that Monday holiday. That's personnel policy. That works just fine. I'm really okay with that. It's unfortunate, but it's okay. But when you close Tuesday to celebrate the holiday, not only did I not get paid for the holiday, but I had to use my paid time off for the day you closed. So I felt like I got a double zap. The point that I'd like to make and that I would hope you'd consider when you're developing the personnel policy, I earn -- I've been in the department almost six years. So I earn an average of about 2.3 hours a week for paid time off. So my not getting paid for Tuesday, it takes me a whole month to recover those eight hours. So it's really difficult for me to accumulate any time. If I need time for, you know, dentist appointments or anything personal, if I'm sick, if I have family matters. Because I only accumulate two hours a week, there's no way I'm going to get a vacation. I just feel like I've been here for six years, and I'd like you to consider how this impacts me. I did call some of the other small times to find out. And I understand that towns have very diverse employees. You have employees that work different days. You have employees that work different hours, different schedules, have different needs. I understand that. And by trying to develop a personnel policy that covers your whole spectrum of employees and all of the different events that affect those employees, I think it's probably difficult to come up with an employee policy that's fair to everybody at all times. Not difficult, probably impossible. The town of Waterboro, for example, their policy is if the town hall is closed on a day that it would have been open, you get paid. I'd like to remind you again that that's not raising any more money against the budget. It's money that was already budgeted for me to work. The nature of my job is that I do really office coverage. Now, I do a lot of reports. I type the permits. I answer the calls. I field as many calls and emails that I can handle to take it off Ken's plate. That's what I do. If it doesn't get done on Tuesday, it gets done on Wednesday. So it isn't like, other than we're always very, very, very busy, it isn't like you have to hire somebody to come in and help me recover what didn't happen that day. So I'd like you just to consider maybe looking at another way that -- and like I said, the holidays, that's just the throw of the dice. If it falls on a Monday, it falls on a Monday. I don't get paid. I can accept that. It's when you close for another reason, it really impacts me. And the only suggestion that I could make is like the Waterboro approach. And I don't know, I accumulate per hour .07 hours. So that's how I get two hours a week. I don't know if maybe that could be changed to make it a little more generous? I'm not sure. But I would just like, as you're developing the policy, to kind of consider how -- and I'm not sure. I think because the employees are so different, maybe it's only me that gets hit like this? I don't know. I think a lot of your staff is probably salaried.
We do have a lot of salaried staff, so situations like this do rarely come up. However, I do agree, I feel like if the town hall closes to reasons beyond your control or our control, whether it's a holiday, snow day, or a different type of emergency, I think we've closed due to odor, you should be paid for those hours. It's not your fault, and you still have your bills to pay, and you look forward to that income. So there's possibly a way to reword that line in the personnel policy. Possibly instead of saying "emergency closure," just "closed for..."
I think it would be easier for you to administer your policy if it was something that simple. If the town hall would have been open, and it's not, you get paid.
Is this the corrected one? Emergency closing? Employees may be excused from work due to severe weather or other public-related emergencies at the discretion of the town administrator. Employees will receive their regular compensation for such closings only if the closing occurs during their normally scheduled work hours, as shall pertain to early closures and full-day closures. So possibly employees may be excused from work due to severe weather or other public-related?
There may be a --
So we have to add in this?
Well, there may be a section under -- I mean, we've always, always paid. If the staff comes in for any reason, they're sent home, whether it be the odors, the bed bite issue, or snow closure. If they ever have come into the building and we've closed early for something, the board has always paid that. Always paid them when we send them home early. If you're looking to make adjustments to the holiday, I think there's a different page in there for that.
Okay.
Or you could combine it all together. It's okay. I think that we have -- it would just -- we have just two hour -- three hourly employees. And of course, it'll take -- it'll be a transfer station too if we change the policy. So if you ever close for a reason.
Okay, so holiday. As of -- the holidays listed below are paid holidays for full-time and probationary employees providing the holiday falls on a day that is normally worked by the employee. The Board of Selectmen reserves the right to approve. So then, does it go on? The employee's scheduled workday before the holiday must be worked in order to be eligible unless the holiday falls within a pre-approved scheduled vacation week. So that's the line really we'd have to look at too. So, I mean, can we take time to look at this and?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want this back or do you want to do?
Kim, do you agree with what Elise is saying? So I can try to draft something and send it to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Town clerk, tax collector, registrar, voters, and the town administrator job description. It's going to take a while. I wish I could have retyped this, but...
All right, Brenda.
Good night.
Good night.
That's after. One at a time here. Okay, so you... Hold on, that's not it. Is this what we're looking at? Did you get a copy?
I -- the only thing I --
Nature of work?
I have the original ones that you gave me. I haven't made any changes. I was looking to you for whatever you think.
Yeah, I should have retyped this. So I'm looking at the town administrator nature of work here.
And these came from -- these are the ones that you originally gave me?
Yep.
Okay.
I know some of them are --
I typed them and then you're making all these changes. I didn't type them.
Yeah, okay. So this -- okay, so this position is responsible for -- and that's somebody, there was an "and" in there, just going to cross that out. Are we looking at the same copy so far? Very professional work as the Chief Administrator Officer in assisting the Board of Selectmen in managing town affairs in accordance with municipal ordinances and the laws of the state of Maine and the United States. So this position is responsible for -- Chief Administrator Officer, does that sound right?
Does -- I mean, administrative office. It doesn't have to say that.
Yeah.
Whatever you want to say.
No, it doesn't have to say chief.
So professional work as the -- how do you want it to say? As the... Just administrator?
Yeah.
Get rid of the other two words?
Yeah, administrator. We'll just keep -- yeah, just administrator. In assisting the Board of Selectmen in managing town affairs. Okay, and then the next sentence should have an "and." An employee of this class is responsible for providing basic secretarial and administrative support to the Board of Selectmen as well as carrying out special assignments as necessary. Work involves considerable public contact and screening of calls with considerable independence of action in the disposition of routine matters and in receiving complaints and providing information. Employees should have familiarity with the organizational and operating characteristics of the town of Acton. Work may be of a confidential nature and is performed under the general supervision of the Board of Selectmen. The administrator is charged with executing the policies and procedures put forth by the Board of Selectmen in the town -- so this is -- oh, this was still in the paragraph form. Put forth by the Board of Selectmen in the town meeting. The administrator shall act in such capacity as the Board of Selectmen may direct in municipal, state, federal, and other policy issues affecting the town. The administrator is responsible for assisting in the consolidation of a proposed budget in conjunction with the Selectmen and Treasurer in the administration of the budget once adopted. The administrator is charged with the responsibility of advising the Board and general public on the current status of all affairs of the town. And then I was crossing out the rest of that sentence. So the next one, receives calls and delete "and" callers. Acertains the nature of the inquiry or complaint and refers it to the Board of Selectmen or to the proper official for an answer or action. Types memos, forms, reports, agendas, and general correspondence, and may compose routine letters and memos in response to standard inquiries. And cross out the rest. Sorts, processes, and files correspondence and other material determining proper file designations, organizes and revises filing system as needed. Orders and maintains office supplies. Assists in putting together the town report. I crossed out town budget because it's on another line. Town warrant and other special projects. The administrator is responsible for the maintenance of sound, positive public relations between the town and its citizens, between the town and other governmental agencies, and between the various boards of commissions that make up the town government. Does that sound right to you?
Between the various boards?
Governmental agencies.
Between the various boards and commissions. Yes, it does.
The administrator will attend board meetings and/or committee meetings as deemed necessary by the Selectmen. We could probably just change that to the administrator will attend board meetings.
As deemed necessary, or no?
I feel like it shouldn't be "and/or." It's just...
Yep.
I mean, how often do you go to committee meetings?
No, I don't.
Yeah. Cross that out. The administrator performs such other duties as may be directed by the Board of Selectmen. So we have essential duties and responsibilities. So that beginning part was the nature of work, and now we have essential duties and responsibilities. Some of them may feel like we just repeated from above. Carries out the directives of the Board of Selectmen, prepares reports and written recommendations as part of these activities. Attends meetings of the Board of Selectmen, preparing and providing supporting documents and information pertinent to agenda items. Accomplishes -- I was going to add "or delegates." Minutes of the meeting. Serves as the liaison between the Board of Selectmen and town personnel, comma, town attorney. And then I'm going to add a couple lines down as also a liaison mentioning. So I would like to add serves as a liaison... Okay, between the Board of Selectmen and various... So, okay, so, comma, various public and private agencies, right? Businesses. Businesses and the citizens of the town. So it's going to go -- let me see if I can get this right. Serves as a liaison between the Board of Selectmen and town personnel, comma, town attorney, various public and private agencies, businesses, and citizens of the town. The next sentence, I was going to move around a little bit. It's going to say the same, but just move it. So it's going to read monitors the budget and all financial affairs of the town with the assistance of the Treasurer and Board of Selectmen. Responsible for implementing all Board of Selectmen's policy decisions and providing staff in all departments with the clear and efficient operating procedures necessary to carry out Board policy mandates. And then I had a question mark. Serves as the approval agent for town purchasing. I'm not sure what that meant.
Serves as the approval agent for town purchasing. I would say like to be able to purchase from Staples or purchase from...
Okay, so we can cross that line out if we have orders and maintains office supplies.
Yep. Remember, I didn't type this original.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't want to be repetitive here. Attends meetings and -- that's a repetitive piece too. I mean, I feel like some of it's like...
This is meetings and conventions on behalf of the town.
Okay, can conventions. Attends meetings and conventions on behalf of the town as requested, okay?
So we're leaving that one?
Yeah, yeah. Um, we crossed that out. And I crossed out the town's attorney because we added it. Represents the town to a variety of outside organizations as requested by the Selectmen. That seems like it would be... You could just add that to the previous sentence. Attends meetings and represents the town as requested by Selectmen, so that would be one sentence. Okay. So requirements of work. Knowledge of municipal management, municipal government programs, communities, community problems, and decision-making processes. Jen, if you need to add any of these, anything to this, let me know. Knowledge of state and federal programs and decision-making process. Knowledge of the principles of personnel administration. Working knowledge of purchasing principles and practices, including the bid process. Working knowledge of computers, including word processing and data entry. Ability to communicate effectively orally and in writing, including research capability and reporting ability. Ability to maintain positive relations with town personnel and to direct, supervise, and motivate staff. Ability to organize and use time effectively and to be creative and analytical. I wanted to add prioritize and delegate. Ability to listen and to accept criticism. Must possess conflict resolution skills and public relation skills. And that's it. So that was the town administrator.
I'll make the changes and send it to you. I'll make the changes and send it to you to review?
Yep.
That's good.
Um, I was a little you know, I, we think we went back and forth on whether or not to, to pull out registrar voters from the town clerk tax collector because the job, it seems like two separate jobs, but they actually overlap.
They do, you're, I mean, you're required to have a registrar voters or at least appoint your town clerk as deputy.
Yeah.
But they are, there are similar duties.
Okay, so we'll read through these. Okay. So, nature of work, this is responsible administrative work in the custody of town records and in serving as town clerk. This is responsible administrative and fiscal work in the collection and handling of town funds. Employee of this class is responsible for the collection and recording of town funds. Work involves general tax collection, work is performed with considerable independence of action in accordance with applicable laws and following generally accepted accounting practices. Work is reviewed through observation, verification, internal audit, and through fiscal audit. Employee of this class is responsible for the preparation and maintenance of official documents, supervision of elections, issuance of various licenses and permits, recording various documents in preparation of reports. Work is performed in accordance with the town ordinances and state and federal laws with a high degree of independence and general supervision from the Board of Selectmen. Essential duties and responsibilities. Supervises and is responsible for the collection of all monies, receives and processes all tax payments by mail. Records and, oh, sorry, records and balances all payments. Why does it say by mail, like, and in person, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and in person. Prepares all reports of tax collections and reports to the state on excise taxes and registrations. Prepares timely tax receipt deposits and enters amounts into computer. Prepares a monthly report of tax collections and other receivables. Orders and maintains departmental supplies. Prepares annual department budget. Collects taxes and fees at the counter, prepares is that what that was? Oh, taxes and fees, okay, we'll just leave it. Prepares cutoffs. You know what that is, right? Cutoffs.
Procedure for end of year.
Cut, oh, cutoffs, I see.
Right.
Um, yeah, and you just did that, how'd that go?
Well, we're on a fiscal year, so it doesn't, December 31st isn't too much.
Oh, okay, we just closed the quarter, okay.
Right.
Work, financial audit, okay, requirements of work, working knowledge of the principles and practices of municipal accounting. Thorough knowledge of the lien process. Working knowledge of the principles and practices of municipal cash management. Thorough knowledge of excise tax collection laws and updates. Ability to prepare regular reports on tax collection activities. Considerable, considerable knowledge of modern methods of receiving, depositing, and dispersing large amounts of money.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disperse.
I think the modern methods.
Well, I don't disperse.
Oh, you don't?
No, the Treasurer does.
Is that the modern methods, does that mean the?
Modern methods of receiving, well, that could be, been depositing, we're scanning, we're scanning checks now instead of the old-fashioned way, from the bank, but.
Okay, okay, that's the one. Yeah. Ability to plan, organize.
We're taking that off?
Yeah, we'll take off, disperse, dispersing, sorry.
Yep.
You don't deposit either?
Well, I mean, I guess dispersed, no, I, um, considerable knowledge of modern methods of receiving, depositing, I do. So, deposit it before it goes to the Treasurer.
Oh, okay.
I guess the only thing when I think of dispersing unless it's dispersing large amounts, dispersing change back, you know, maybe they, they think they mean that, but, I mean, you wouldn't really disperse a large amount, the most somebody can make change from is, you know, a hundred, so.
Right.
But that's, I don't know if that's what it means.
No. Yeah, you're right, no, I wouldn't, I don't think that's what that means, we'll, we'll take out the dispersing. Ability to plan, organize, supervise, and review the work of subordinates. Staff. I've never really liked that word. Ability to deal courteously with the public and to establish and maintain effective work relationships with other employees and the public. So, for some reason, this training and experience was thrown in the middle of here?
I think you have two or three different job descriptions that were just kinda dumped together the first time you, when you, remember you gave me six or seven different pages, so I copied and pasted them all.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're just gonna, yeah, take it out of the middle, we'll put it at the end.
Take that out of the middle, yep, go ahead.
Validates official documents, oversees posting of official notices and advertisements, records papers with federal and state government as received. Issues various licenses such as marriage, hunting, fishing, and dog licenses, and maintains all related records. Maintains records of births, deaths, marriages, burials, and sends monthly reports to the state of Maine Office of Vital Statistics, issues certified copies of same. Oversees and participates in the collection of various taxes, including excise and property taxes, and prepares all tax liens for the tax collector, which is yourself.
Yeah, that's part, that's part of the town clerk, you can see where they're joined together.
Yeah, okay.
So. And you could just put, and prepares all tax liens, period.
Computers excise tax on new and used automobiles, trucks, trailers, motorcycles, and boats, keeping and processing records of same. Prepares monthly reports on various areas of activity. And I drew a line there, oh, because we've entering, okay. Um, administers all elections, including scheduling and appointing ballot clerks, orders and prepares ballots, issues absentee ballots, processes and records ballots and reports election results and accepts voter registration. I crossed out collects monies and answers inquiries at town office.
Yeah, because that's.
Because you felt like it was somewhere else?
It was, yeah, it was
Okay.
Described elsewhere a couple times. Prepares a daily deposit of all monies received in the clerk's office, so that's the we have that up there in the, oh, but, that's the knowledge of. So, you, did we talk about preparing daily deposits earlier?
Up here, it says considers knowledge of modern methods of receiving, depositing large amounts of money.
Uh, but it does talk about.
Preparing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's similar, but your repetition can't hurt, I mean, it doesn't necessarily.
Okay, yeah, we'll keep it. Um, so, received, excuse me? Y'all sat?
Would you like to hear what I said?
Well, you, it's, it's, uh.
I, what I said was, you just listed out the extremely vulnerable position in great detail that you have placed this town by putting all this responsibility in one person. That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Also, all of this stuff should have been done in the back room. All these people, you're wasting our time with this.
If we did it in the back room, then you wouldn't be happy with that.
We're just doing it this way, we've had enough, enough.
We're doing it in front of you.
Listen to the paper.
Thank you for your opinion, we're done. Prepares a daily deposit of all monies received, period. And cross off the rest. Administers all oaths of office, maintains terms of office for boards and committees. Performs related duties as required. The registrar is the municipal official who has the exclusive power subject only to appeal to determine whether an applicant is eligible to register to vote, and once registered, whether a person is qualified to continue to vote in the municipality of registration. The registrar is also the only official charged with the maintenance of the voter registration list. It is generally recognized that main registrars have the duty and authority to determine voter eligibility, process new applications for registration and enrollment, whether received by mail or in person, and import voters into the central voter registration system as soon as they have qualified. Process charges of voter information, name, address, enrollment as soon as possible after receipt. Prepare and maintain the central voter registration system and related voter information files. Keep the system current at all times and maintain voter records in accordance with twenty-one A, MRSA, section twenty-three, and the State Archives records retention rules. Protect the privacy of people who have filed requests that their addresses be withheld from the voting list for reasons of personal protection. Provide periodic reports and provide access to public records. Certify voter status on absentee ballot applications, this must be done before absentee ballots are processed on the election day. And as necessary, certify voter status on petitions for statewide referenda and validate petitions for local issues and nomination petitions for local office. Requirements of work, thorough knowledge and understanding of the state statutes relating to the duties and responsibilities of town and city clerks. Thorough knowledge of modern office procedures, practices, and equipment. Ability to establish and maintain effective working relationships with other town officials, employees, and general public. Ability to rapidly acquire and assimilate knowledge of the provisions of the town ordinances and state regulations relating to the operation of the office and town government, and ability to communicate this to office staff and the public. Proficiency in the use of adding machine and do we use an adding machine anymore?
Every day.
Okay, oh, that's right, we do, and typewriter, I don't. Ability to maintain records and prepare reports, ability to plan, assign, and supervise the work of staff. Ability to use the computer system to conduct business and maintain records. Is there any training that you need to attend?
Um, yeah, I have to, I'll pull the statute for you.
Attend training as necessary?
As required by law, okay, the statute.
So, we'll just add that.
Make the changes and email them to you to look at?
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna sign the full-time firefighter policy?
Read that and discussed it on the nineteenth, the only thing that I added was the effective date on it.
Yep, I read this last week. Do I have a motion to sign?
I make a motion that we sign. Full-time firefighter schedule, forty-two hours.
All in favor. Old patrol car.
So, I have a little situation. As you know, the Town of Chapley and the Town of Acton own the old patrol car. There was, when the new car came into service, and he's using it now. Um, I personally had many conversations with the Sheriff's Department, not our deputy, with the administration and with the Sanford City Manager in regards to, what are we gonna do with the car? Is the car titled to Acton slash Chapley, I mean, we know it's the town's cars, both towns own it equally. Um, we've known that since day one. Uh, once the car got stripped out and everything was moved to the new one, it kinda sat. Um, I reached out and had a conversation with Sheriff King. He indicated to me that there might be a couple of towns that might possibly be interested in buying it, that essentially wasn't worth much based on the condition that it was in and the use of it, and he gave me a couple of towns, so I reached out to the Administrator in Chapley and kinda talked about, you know, my board really hasn't made a decision yet, but you know, is your board okay with me calling and seeing kinda where we stand with this car? So, days went by, we had very little luck with the two towns that the sheriff gave me. They weren't interested in it at all, so, um holidays went, some holidays went by, I reached out, had another conversation with Chapley and their board is ready to go out to bid for the car. So, I sent, um, the administration of the Sheriff's Department an email basically saying, um you know, I've got the, the basic information on the car, year, make, model, VIN, um, but is it possible to get some pictures of it, inside and out? Can I come down and take those pictures so that when our boards jointly get together and determine what they wanna put the minimum bid on, we can be ready to go? There was a couple of emails exchanged, um, essentially, what it comes down to is today I called the sheriff again because I hadn't gotten any responses from the administration and they believe there was a misunderstanding. And they believe that, um, they believe that when I, they believe that the town wasn't interested in the car. And I did say to him, um, that, you know, I did tell him more than once that Acton was not interested in, in keeping the car. Um, but I was very clear, and, and clear with him today, um, on the phone, and I followed it with an email to say that not clear, A, that we weren't looking for anything out of it, and certainly, I don't have any authority when it comes to the Town of Chapley, so even if you got that from one side, you know, so we kinda went around and, and he misunderstood, so this is where it's at now. He has put six hundred dollars worth of, he, he has indicated to me that they've put six hundred dollars worth of parts into this car to get it into their spare line, because according to the, the news, they've had a couple of, um, I guess in the last month, month and a half, they've had a couple of instances with rollover or crash, I don't, I don't know the details of it, but, um, so they, they assumed they assumed, they put some money into this car and they put it back in their fleet.
Oh.
Oh, so, um, that doesn't mean that it goes away and that anything changes, I mean, sell our car and he understands and takes responsibility for, you know, with your permission, I will speak to Chapley as well and kinda catch them up on it, and, I mean, they will make good on it, they'll make, you know, we'll figure, figure it out. Originally, Chapley was talking about, about a thousand dollars is what they would have liked to seen get out of the car for the condition and the mileage. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it, I'm gonna get you some blue book, but we need to kinda figure out what we think that would have been worth. Factor in that, see if you guys can come to some sort of, um, agreement, or, you know, you can always I mean, or at the end of the day, you could just put it out to bid with the, I don't know what they've done to it, if they've made it, you know it's almost like they made it another sheriff's car again, which we can't.
Probably put lights on it, or.
You can't sell it like that, so. That's very early information.
But they can take those parts off, right, and then they could get their six hundred dollars back-ish.
But if town's only gonna get five hundred out of it, you know, we better off trying to sell it to them, to let them keep it as a fleet, I don't know, so. Something to think about, I just.
Yeah, we didn't donate it to them.
No, I know, and I was very clear, and, and I assure you that I never, ever indicated that to him in any way.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I.
See what Chapley says, but, I mean, yeah, we should, the town.
So, what do you think of the car, I mean, not as, you know, you have any ideas?
A thousand dollar come from to begin with.
Chapley, that was the minimum bid that Chapley wanted to see if we went out.
We split that with them, right?
We would have split it with them, so, let's just, I mean, but we could have gotten, you could have gotten a lot more, it's, it's, you know, you go out to a sealed bid, you put a minimum on it. You have no idea what you're gonna come back at, but.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna go over to Chapley on my way home and just stop in and just touch base and, you know, see what thoughts they have, it's something to think about for next week, but
Okay.
The Sheriff King is aware.
Can we get a blue book value on it, maybe?
Sure.
Just. Thank you.
Okay, the use of town hall policy continued.
So, last week please, this is a new one, that's two weeks, yes, the nineteenth. Um, all right, so there were no changes on the front page. On the second page, you wanted to add, um, clean the kitchen floors, stove countertops, and put the, use kitchen, we wanted to put the dishes away.
Yep.
Um, and then we just changed the office manager wording.
Yeah, and we took out, oh, we're gonna take out the waiving of the fees, but.
That was duplicated, yep. Uh, I thought I did that, is that, you've got the master?
Yeah.
An additional, just put a line through it. We'll get it right, bring it back to you. Other than that, those were all the, the only changes, right?
Yeah. Fund balance policy continued.
So, you, um, got copies of that on the nineteenth from Michelle. Her job description is the next one that you guys are gonna look at, so I asked her if she wanted to, if it was okay with you to bring her to a Tuesday night meeting so you can discuss both at the same time?
Sure. I, I, the only change I had in the policy was to add an ED at the end of a word.
Okay, other than that, you understand it and you're.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So, do you want her to be here the night that you discuss the, her job description?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a preference or whatever Tuesday works best for her?
Yeah, whatever's best for her.
May I have the, um, fund balance so I know where to add the ED and? May I have the fund balance so I know where to add the ED and prepare that for signatures for next week?
It's in purple.
You're okay with it, Kim?
Yeah, I've gone through it.
So we were, I thought we were gonna go over another policy tonight.
Yeah, I thought those were gonna, some of that was gonna take a little longer than it did, it's already been an hour, so I just tabled it unless you want to. The freedom of information is the next one, I guess what I was gonna say anyways is, freedom of information is regulated by main state statute, and we have very specific things that, you know, you can't just come up with your own policy, you have to follow the main guidelines, so I will print off the latest legislation, I think there's been some recent changes to the amount that could be charged, and the free viewing, so I'll send you copies of all that, you can cross compare them to the policy-
Okay.
And look at them again next week.
Yep.
But you don't have the right to, you can't make it more stringent than what the law allows, so.
Okay. New business marijuana meeting.
So this is on here, just as an FYI, it does happen from time to time, we have computer and camera issues. I got, I had a call this morning inquiring why the December 15th marijuana meeting had not been air-jet, I contacted the APAT Director. There was a technical glitch with that video, after a minute into the meeting, the audio died, it wasn't worth producing, I think it's a result of an SD card having bad sectors at the end, I formatted the card in hopes to clear up the glitch. So, the 12:15 meeting will not be on there, there's no-
Sorry about that.
It's not on there. And just, so the, the public knows, because you certainly can call me anytime, the board set a three-day turnaround, correct, outside of holidays? It's three days, so when the meeting ends, you should see it within three days.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you don't at that point, then there might be something that, that we need to look into.
Deputy code enforcement that was added at the beginning.
So, back on the 14th, Ken sent an email saying that he was interested in speaking to the board about the hourly rate of Steve McDonough, the deputy code enforcement officer in Chapley. I sent the treasurer an email asking her what it was currently at so I could discuss it with the board, maybe any history that she had on the wage. So, she sent me back the email that says, the rate was set at $20 years ago, parentheses like years when I used to work for Ken, being Michelle, but he has not actually put in, in for any hours since we upgraded to Trio, so I can't give you any history, we've been using Trio since 2006.
Okay.
So there's no payroll history. Although for comparison, Brian Paul was paid $25 an hour when he was Deputy CEO, Corey Norman, the current one, is paid $25 an hour, both of which have far less qualifications.
Okay.
And then I sent Ken to see you guys.
And so, he'd like to see him get paid 30 or 35?
35, I believe was his request.
Yeah, I, I agree that, that wage should be brought up to what he is being paid currently in Chapley, if we do need him, we want him to come, and that wage should be brought up to what he's being paid there. And, like you said, we haven't used him in a while, but I'd hate to have that emergency come along and him say no, because for 20 bucks an hour, I'd rather stay home.
Motion?
Make a motion that we-
It's just for that one individual?
Just the one individual.
Just for the one, yes.
It's more like a emergency substitute step in.
Right. It's not somebody we would use all the time.
He has his own, he has his own full-time job and-
Right.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the raise for-
Steve McDonough.
Steve McDonough.
All in favor? Okay, public comment. Just wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year, I forgot to do that at the beginning of the meeting.
Happy New Year to you too. Cindy Hart, Road Committee. We had talked about the snow and ice class before, I know Elise has been to it, and then last week Ed said that State of New Hampshire is running a green class. Normally, the State of Maine does a different program where we would go to the Elks Club or whatever, but I got a call today from Bob Stevens, they're doing it differently, we will get notification through email, but what they're going to do is have them actually, the teacher come to your town and produce the class right there, they'll come down here and do a half-day class. And then he called me afterwards, and there are availabilities in the next two weeks because they're just starting it. I was hoping that next Tuesday morning, we might be able to host this here and invite the planning board, Warrant and Finance, and anybody that plows or is involved with ice and snow control. This is a way for us to save money and protect our lakes. New Hampshire has gone all green now with the way they're dealing with their roads, and they may call it sand, but that's dirt when it comes in my house that they're throwing on the roads.
Did you say he's available two Tuesday?
For the next two weeks, he's, because they're just starting the program, I spoke to him and he's got availabilities, I thought a Tuesday morning would be good, because I know you two are better off at that.
Right. Would it be better to do the, the second Tuesday though, to give other people time to find out about this, to be able to come?
More notice.
More notice.
More notice, two weeks, sure, yes, whatever you wanna do. It's a really good class and, and something Acton needs, it'll save us money and protect the, the environment.
So that lands on the 16th?
I don't have a calendar, is that what it is? I will check with him tomorrow, and if that's the case, schedule on him for nine, the only other thing we would need is perhaps the ability to provide coffee and donuts for people. I know he'll be traveling and they usually give a break halfway through. But if that's good, I'll contact him tomorrow, and if you could notify the various boards, it's a good class and well worth attending.
Do you have a flyer or something that I could email to all the committees?
They haven't even done it yet, I just heard, but they just changed it and they're coming on, but when I get it, I'll get it to you.
So what, what exactly, the memo, what exactly, what are we calling it, so it's an ice and-
It's a snow and ice prevention class.
And who, who's putting it on exactly?
It'll be the local road center. The teacher would be Phil Curtis, he's your Road Ranger, and has, he was a former selectman, former road commissioner, and has about 40 years of experience managing roads, he's, he's very good at this.
Based on our space, do you have any interest in maybe opening it up to the neighboring town?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're gonna bring him out here and host it, maybe we-
Sure, no, that would be wonderful.
I'm not to say, you know, they can come.
No, I wanna spread the word.
I'll send it to the administrator over there as well when we get something.
Okay, terrific, and I'll call him tomorrow and get to you, Jennifer, how's that?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
I'm Mike McCrum, I'm on the pot committee, and I had some questions about the video. Did he know that it was not good, going well at the meeting, or did he, did he find out after the fact?
Well, let me tell you what town policy is, I haven't spoken to him about it, but this is the policy that the board has, has set forth as far as I know, and I don't know who filmed it, but the cable, so two things can happen, the cable employees, whoever's actually filming, or the selectman or myself, can go to the director and say, you know, there was some possible foul language, there was some possible this, possible that, we wanna, we want the selectman to look at it prior to it being filmed, I mean, prior to it being released on, on the internet, we have, you know, whether they're swearing or whatever the case, that has happened in the past. Mike, Corey and I communicate very well, and I haven't spoken to him about this video, nor has he come to me saying that any of his staff has, has concerns about it. I did hear that towards the end of the meeting, there was a little bit, some, some voices raised, but I heard that from individuals and nobody related to cable, so he absolutely was not, and nor has any of our employees ever been asked to cut or edit it, and the board has the right to say, don't film it if they don't feel something.
That wasn't my question.
Okay, well, no, I'm just getting to where, okay. So he, no, he, nobody, nobody said anything to him about the meeting, if they did, he didn't pass it on to us.
Well, no, but my question was, is did he know there was a problem with that, whatever card?
Not until the end, no, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood, no.
Yeah, you did.
Not until the end, I mean, so, let's just say, and Eric shakes his, let's just say Eric films the whole thing, Mike comes in after the fact and up, imports it and does his magic and gets it on cable, it's not until then he realizes there's an issue.
Okay, because there was some confusion in the swapping of emails, and I was led to believe that he knew, I was, I assumed or something, whatever, I just thought that they had known that there was an audio problem-
Well, no, I just hoped they would stop and correct it. No, 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 that's, and I only spoke to one member, and if I misconstrued that, I apologize, but that's not, that wasn't what was said, I read the email directly from Mike, he found out after the fact, the tape is turned over to him, he goes and imports it and turns it into a, you know, a video.
And just to verify, there were voices raised, but there was no, it was nothing like what I've seen in these meetings.
That's why I was surprised, I thought you were going there, but, no, certainly-
You guys were there, you saw it.
Eric has before on meetings, you know, he'll ask the board to stop if he's having a technical issue back there, so if it's something they know is happening at this, he's certainly gonna stop it.
I just wanted to clear that up, because I, I wasn't sure whether, if there was knowledge that it was happening, then we should've been told.
No, and what I read you was directly from him.
Flipped on our smartphones and recorded it, because it's sort of a useless endeavor if you're not gonna record it.
Right.
Especially when we're voting.
That was a good one, yeah.
We absolutely didn't know.
Happy New Year, Williams. I just wanted to say that as far as the job descriptions, the description of the town administrator and everything, I assume that was based on a bunch of templates, is that correct?
Yes.
That you had. I don't have a copy of it, so I was listening, in the beginning of the portion about town administrator, there was something about managing town affairs, and I'm sorry that I, I was writing it down as, as it was said. I, I don't think that's a town administrator's job, assisting the selectmen in managing town affairs, but the administrator shouldn't be managing town affairs, that's why we have a, an executive board of selectmen. The, the second thing-
It was in the beginning?
I think, towards the, the first paragraph that you read under that, was at the very beginning of the-
Assisting.
Assisting the board of selectmen in-
Board of Selectmen in managing.
Oh, assisting and managing, well, that's fine then, I missed that, I was trying to write it down. The second thing about protection for, for Miss Ru and for anybody else, and for the board of selectmen, you said that any other duty that was given to the, to the administrator to do, I think you should consider adding the word lawful or legal duty, so that they're not caught any time in being somewhat pressured by some future board of selectmen, most, most companies say lawful in their, do-
So the administrator performs such other lawful duties?
Lawful or legal or something like that. And then, the third thing is, as far as the background experience, there should be some sort of a thing under each of these offices, giving what formal education is required and/or how that translates into experience in place of formal education, how many years experience in being an administrator, how many years experience in being a tax collector and registrar, something of that sort should be in there. The other thing is about the overtime and all, overtime and bonuses I have a hard time with from a, a Warrant and Finance Committee, because they've been stuck in there, and it really is a increase in pay, and last meeting, I thought that it was wrong to have added a time and a half at a meeting of the town, because legally, they can, they can leave it as the amount that was suggested by the warrant, or they can lower it, but they can't increase the amount of dollars that are being expended by the town.
I'm not sure when was the time and a half talked about?
June of, last town meeting, the time and a half for the-
For the road commissioners?
For, not road commissioners, the road workers.
Oh, the workers?
Yes, it was, it was an added amendment on the floor to add their, to a time and a half after 10 hours of work or eight hours of work or something.
I mean, I had to pull the warrant, but there was a, the actual warrant article said to pay after a certain amount, someone made a motion on the floor to amend it.
Right, up, and there was no, there was no legal basis of doing that. The other thing about this whole thing is the fact that I don't know how long the provisional status of a new employee is, or whether it varies from department to department. At one time, I knew it was 12 months, and I thought that is extraordinarily long, most companies, corporations do 90 days or at worst 180 days, and it should be applicable to all people. And if you get a bonus for Christmas, it should be for everybody who's working there. If there are full-time employees, which should be decided after 90 days or 180 days, if you don't know whether an employee is doing well at 90 days, then, or if they're not doing well at 90 days, they're not gonna do well ever. And as far as Ms. Charman is concerned, I totally agree that there should be some sort of a way to make it as simple as possible, and that PTO time should be given instead of all these other things for bereavement and everything, if, if the town closes up, they should go ahead and, and, and accept it that, and everybody should be under the same, under the same rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I just follow up a couple little things?
Yeah.
So, the probationary is on there for six months.
Okay.
Six months.
And, and the, the board, when they started doing code enforcement and some of the other job descriptions that happened after the employee was already in the position, they took the requirements at the bottom out until the position, if the position ever gets reopened, then they would put them in, like when you did the fire chief for the first time, that was all put in there, but they didn't wanna put stipulations in there when someone was already in the position.
Yep.
Brendan Meehan, taxpayer, I was at the marijuana meeting 12:15, and you all missed it, because it was absolutely hysterical, it was the best Saturday Night Live skit I've seen in a long time, but it did, it did reveal a very important fact that the, there's nothing democratic or objective being done with that committee. Thank you.
I think I might've heard it too.
Yeah.
This-
The word was-
I don't repeat those words.
Well, naturally, I disagree with Mr. Meehan, as usual. The meeting was, it finally came to a head as, as we knew it was going to, the votes were taken, there was a majority vote, we will repeat that and try to get, it's been, the report's been revised, we'll vote again on this coming Friday and report to the selectmen if we're successful, and, and hope that, you know, at that point, then it becomes the selectmen's property and you could decide what, what the next step might be, but, the meeting I thought was finally more than just information, it was a heated meeting, there was a heated discussion, but it was fruitful, I thought, and necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen McManus. I would just like to revisit, last time I was up here, I had asked if we could have the old business about the zoning maintenance put back into updates, and I know you had said no, but if you don't mind the time, I would read back your own words in four different meetings that we had about that, and unless you would like to reconsider, I could read those.
It's probably gonna take more than three minutes?
Uh, probably not.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm distracted by somebody in the audience, and I hate to have to re, ask you to repeat what you-
What I want?
Everything.
Okay.
Am I restarting it?
Yes, you're restarting.
I had, I would like to revisit my request that the zoning ordinance updates, or the old business, be, continue to be put on the agenda, and we had briefly discussed it up here, and you said, I don't think it, my request was, you know, a yes, so, I would just like to say that some of the comments here was that on July 25th, it said, I won't read it all, I'll make a brief, that the board will keep the issue on the agenda until it's resolved. And then on August 1st, it said, Ms. Miller responded, this is a new board that is working with Mr. Paul, this subject on the agenda, and will remain so until resolved. And then on August 8th, about the maintenance zoning, Ms. Ru said that the CEO's new schedule is to spend Wednesdays of each week on violations, complaints would begin the following day, so hopefully a report will be available at the next meeting. And on old business, September 12th, it says, items under old business are still being worked on, these are important matters that the board leaves on the agenda until they are resolved, so not to be overlooked. Essentially, all new business not completed will move up to old business the following week. So I guess my thought on this is that after the code officer, used to have Wednesday as our day to talk about zone, inland zoning. That lasted a short time. Then he went back to a regular schedule after everyone decided that Wednesday was not just to be that day. And at that time, and it could be coincidental, but that was the last time anything was on old business. So that was October third was maintenance zoning has been left off the agenda as of that day, October third, and we have not had anything since. And I would respectfully request that we continue to have updates. Thank you.
Were you going to say something?
Well, I was. I was going to say that I know we had decided to try to find somebody to help. Now, we haven't found somebody yet, so I was thinking that's, that's why we weren't still doing it, until we get somebody to help, and then we can start updating you because right now, he doesn't have, you know, the time. So, I mean, that was my understanding of why we kind of...
Well, my, my understanding too was that to, I guess, to be, the issue that was being kept on the agenda was that we needed to get the bulk of the complaints dealt with. And once we got the ball rolling, and once we got Ken on those, you know, he got what, four Wednesdays going, got the letters out, and started to get responses back. Once, and then once we stopped him from doing the Wednesdays, we figured he was maintaining the follow-ups and that we don't...
Because we don't have any feedback.
Okay, so you're looking for feedback?
Yes, because our experience is that the prioritization of the work is shoreline zoning. And as we've discussed up here before, that we are the year-round residents, and we'd like to see more time spent on inland zoning than shoreline zoning, and that we would not like to be the second priority all the time.
Greg Vermette, like I said, I believe it should be kept on here because things are not completed. And like I said last year, this is going to go on, and the snow's going to fall, and everything's going to be covered. And guess what? It's happened. A lot of people haven't done anything yet, and now the snow has fallen. And I think somebody needs a boot to get moving.
We're trying to get somebody hired. The application's still out there, and they're still coming in. We, we need to broaden our search as well. But Ken needs help down there. He is swamped.
Who follows him around? Do you know exactly what he does every day? He's got a secretary. There's other towns that one person is handling everything.
Williams again. When this board of selectmen began their office in July, we, I know I stood up and asked if we could please have a better allotment as far as the agendas are concerned. And we talked about follow-through. I know it's difficult. I know sometimes, for example, in this, I didn't know that you were, that you were having difficulty finding someone for, for the CEO as an assistant. But every item that has not been resolved should be listed, even if it's an extra sheet of paper. And then finally, when it's resolved, hallelujah, you can say, "Take that off the old business list."
Well, I don't agree completely with you because we're not going to put every single one of Jennifer's phone calls that she gets on this agenda.
Phone calls we're not talking about. We're talking about what has been discussed here. What has been discussed here?
And it's a collective, it's a collective group of complaints or violations possibly. We can't put them all on there. It's just not fair to the property owners. It's not fair to Ken. It's micromanaging.
If you put it all together, Madam Chair, and you have something as far as beautification and trashy neighborhoods or whatever, that's an issue. And you can give us an update at every meeting if it hasn't been solved as to what's being done. In this instance here, it should, it should be said, it should be said that you're looking for an assistant, and you've hired, you've interviewed X number of people, and you're sending another issuance out for the job position or something like that, just to give us an update, please.
Too cold smile.
Roland Waterhouse, taxpayer. I have a request of the board, and I'm going to use the fire chief's item that he brought forward to you two weeks ago to change a policy, which regardless of how I feel about the policy, y'all voted on it and approved it. There was no discussion, no comment, not that I want to make a comment, but there was no period to ask questions or express concerns. So if someone comes up and presents something, what I would like is for anybody that is sitting in the audience that might have a question, can they ask a question when it's being presented? Because under the guidelines, the audience is supposed to be quiet during the board of selectmen's meeting until comments section. That's my request. You understand?
I do understand.
Okay.
I do feel like he came up here and he explained the policy before we signed it.
Yes, but, yeah, what I'm saying is, if anybody had a question, they couldn't ask that question because we're not allowed to speak until the comments section. That's what I was, that's what I'm trying to say, okay? He came up, explained what he wanted to do. Y'all voted on it and approved it. I can sit in the audience and keep my comment to myself because it's not going to do any good, is it? You already approved it. So if I had a question, I can't ask him.
Policies can be changed after the fact. You can ask a question.
Once you voted on it, it's done.
How many times have we changed the personnel policy?
I don't know.
Or the town hall use policy?
I'm just saying, you know.
You can still ask the question.
When there's something coming up that somebody's proposing, and it requires a vote from y'all.
I, I felt like I had everything I needed to know to make the vote. I had, he spoke to me first as liaison, discussed it with me.
So what you're saying is, go sit down.
No, I'm not. I'm still, I'm saying you can still ask a question after the fact. It's probably not going to change the policy.
Then why, then why ask the question afterward?
It could be considered to change. I'm just saying, I can't, I can't go and ask every single taxpayer your opinion before we make a decision.
No, 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 it's not, it's not that, okay? If somebody's sitting in the audience and I say, "Hey, I want to do this," and they have a question...
Okay, so, time. Yeah. We can't win no matter what. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to hear the policies being read here in front of you, right? You don't want to hear them in front of you. That's what somebody said. But if we do it behind the door, forget it.
Mike McCrum, he's got a really good point, okay? He really does. When, when you read off these things that you guys sign, or you yay, nay, what have you, there's no chance for anybody to say anything at that point. They've got to wait till public comment, and it's after you've made the vote. And you just said, "There's probably not going to change." But you said, "You can't go and talk to every resident in Acton." Well, you should at least pay attention to the folks that are here. I mean, that's my opinion. There's people that come pretty regularly, and they have questions, and, and that's all they want to do is ask about, well, like the CEO. I'm still confused about the whole CEO thing. I don't get why we have to have one guy, helpers, secretaries, and he's so swamped in a town the size of Acton. When in New York, they've got much more going on, and they're doing it with less people. So what is the, why is it so difficult here in Acton? I mean, it's not like we've got a subdivision or a Walmart going in. That's, what is, why is he so swamped? Can you answer me that?
Because he is one person doing the permits and, and the inspections and...
Right. And how many permits a year?
I don't know.
Well, you see, these are questions that, these are the kind of questions these people might have.
It's not just building permits. It's electrical and plumbing and...
Well, I understand that, but these are questions that the folks might have. Like I've, I've been building them up for a while now because I just don't get this whole controversy over the CEO, why he needs all this help in a town the size of Acton.
He needs a part-time help. That's not all.
Okay. I mean, and I'm supposed to just accept that when I see other towns getting by with less who have way more going on? Thank you.
I guess some of your opinions, you basically made Karen and I look like liars when we told you the way we were treated by a certain person. And I've got a note from you right here that you couldn't even sign your name in ink. You did it in pencil, telling me that you were happy with the work. I bet you you people don't know what he does for work.
Okay, don't raise your voice.
I bet you you have people haven't spent time with him. I bet you you haven't spent time with him. I bet you you don't know what his job is. When I had people under me, I had to know what they were doing. I had to know what their job does, was. But you people don't. And by not putting a letter in somebody's file when they've been rude to people is not right. But you people think everything's fine.
The comments section is over. Announcements, two thousand five Ford ambulance bid is due on January sixteenth. Planning board meeting, January fourth at seven. Marijuana meeting on Friday, the fifth at six. The board of selectmen is meeting again on the ninth at five and the sixteenth at five as well. The planning board meets the eighteenth at seven PM. And the board of selectmen is meeting on the twenty-third and the thirtieth at five. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Office hours, your office hours?
Our office hours? Yes, you instructed me to put that on the agenda, and it's not on there. So announcements, so, let's just pull it up real quick.
For a second and a third.
So the fourth, eleventh, and eighteenth. Thank you for the reminder. I'll get it on there. Seven to eight.
Seven to eight.
Fourth, eleventh, and eighteenth.
I make a motion. Do we adjourn?
All in favor.